We got all messed up for one meeting.
One, I don't know. So sad. Okay, here we go.
All right.
Isn't that gonna be darted? It is. I'm excited to see how it all comes together. I was trying to decide if we need to put a fresh coat of something on the left side when it's done. We'll see how it looks.
I signed with the budget meeting back around 2007 or 2008. And my wife made cookies for my budget meetings. And just kept me happy no matter when I come to the select board.
You didn't realize what a habit it would become.
No harm done.
Yeah. Sally, the gardens look amazing. All the water towers you just put in that are today. It came out today in what?
To work on and go get near them.
Oh, because of the construction?
Yeah, I mean Fred was the, um, I'm just a red carpet draft.
Yeah.
I saw the other side of the road.
Oh.
But we did the police department and then World War II.
Yeah, there was still, good thing there was still many gardens. And now everything is gonna grow like a foot in a day with all the rain and then the sun.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
And they all love doing it, so that's really great. Then I have Elroy who keeps plugging.
Twenty-three rain sites.
Twenty-three what?
Rain sites.
Yeah. Wow. Were all in Northfield?
Yeah. Yes, it's more than Highgate Center.
Yeah, I was gonna say. What a beauty of a day.
I know. I came for Jeff. If you want a brief.
I do.
Right. And you shared this, but I wasn't there.
That was yesterday. He never saw you before? I saw you, but you.
I saw you. You were sitting right next to him. I was.
Why didn't you come sit with us?
Can you all set? Okay. It is now seven o'clock. We'll call the regular scheduled select board meeting of May 27th. The order will call show that all members are present and accounted for. The first order, do we have any reason to set the agenda or from the board or from the manager? Any reason to reset the agenda? So public participation, first one on the list is Sally Davidson regarding the Northfield Community Planning Project and what timestamp this at seven o'clock.
Hi. Thank you. I'm here to ask the town, if you will, if you're willing to match funds or donations that we get. We're planning on, I'm sure you all received the letter that I sent. Okay. So we're planning on doing flights from the mobile station at South Village down to the Falls Mill Street. That's right on that corner there. On all the telephone poles. And each flight and its kit is $65 approximately. And our goal is to raise $15,000 to cover the cost. And we are hoping that the town will help us out in matching our donations that we get in so we can do this project.
Any input from the board? Dave? Well, I was a co-founder of this project in 2000, as you may know. Did we ask for the town's support back in 2000? No, did we?
Oh, I don't know.
No, I only.
I wasn't on the 2000.
So I built Pass Lock when I started this project in 2000 in conjunction with the Boy Scout parade that was held here. We thought it would be a great community project. And as you can see, all the names on that poster, we solicited. And we had enough funds. We did the whole street. So I just asked, Mr. Manager, do you know if the municipality has funded this project in the past?
Since I've been here, I'm not aware of any municipal funds.
We haven't done this since 2000. It's been 24 years since any funds have been raised for this.
Right.
And obviously, they're depleted.
Yeah.
So I know Bill and I are doing it now because the flags you see up are the flags that are left and everything is lost, faded.
I'm also.
So is there a request to match however many funds you receive up to? Like, could the municipality potentially be chipping in $15,000 for those or?
No, that's not our thought. Our thought is we're going to raise what we can.
Yeah.
And if we come short of $15,000, would you be willing to bring it up to that? But you can put a ceiling on it. You can do it any way you want. We're just asking the town to support us financially.
Yeah.
And I don't want to say physically because I don't want, I think TDS is involved in doing, they've done it in the past and I understand they're going to do it now.
Okay, yeah, that was one of the pieces I was wondering about is if the town could help with installation rather than fundraising or something, whether there's an in-kind potential, but it sounds like that part's already taken care of. Yeah, I don't have any other questions right now.
I don't have any.
I guess I don't either.
No questions, no answers, Sally. That's the whole problem. We have a commitment from Farm More Farm that's going to sponsor one of the flags. And so we will start off by saying we'll get out there. When is your fundraising end date? When do you want to have those accomplished by?
I would love to have it before our next, well, obviously Veterans Day is the end of the season, so we definitely would like to do it ASAP. It would have been really nice to have it for Memorial Day, but you know, it's just a kickstart, just didn't happen.
Right.
And we are in the process of getting, actually, I brought a copy of the, we're doing a tri-fold and those are in print right now. But I can give you a copy of what the tri-fold is sort of gonna look like. And you can use your imagination, which is going to go to our reach out people that have done it in the past and any that we can think of, obviously.
Okay.
This is.
I'm gonna get out.
They're gonna have to share it. And this is what we're going to send the people in their contribution.
So there's a reward for participating?
Right.
And it's outside of the budget, so it's going to be a board decision whether we support this or not. And we will have to take it up at a later date after the success of the fundraiser reaching out go because we need, obviously, we're not going to commit to an unknown number. I presume the board.
Well, that's why, that's why I said, you know, if you feel come putting a ceiling on it, that's fine too.
Well, that is, that's going to be up for discussion coming up. We don't have the item, agenda item tonight to act on that. So we will have to bring that back after everybody has a moment to think about this request and how much, everything that you've talked about. So there's, because we don't have it on an action item, we can't, by Robert's Rules of Order, we can't vote extra money during public participation.
Okay. I sent the letter in advance so you would kind of get an idea of what my expectation was.
Right. And that did not make it onto the select board for the, I did not see your letter until the package came out, which is this one.
We had it in our last.
I was gonna say.
And I was in Canada, so there you go.
It was on the agenda for our last meeting, right? Sally couldn't be here, so we've had a couple.
And I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'm sorry. But I don't think, are we in a position to make a motion and approve this? Or you want more time to think about it? How does the board feel? I'd like to think about it.
I would too.
Yeah, right.
So I have one more question while we're on the flag project. Can anybody tell me when the flag is going to be installed down on the common?
So.
Yeah, please.
Yep, so we have purchased the flag. We have somebody that's donating a large piece of granite to be the base. And so Mr. Russo is working with that person.
That's funny you say that because that person contacted me yesterday and said he had donated a granite for the flag to go into and he hadn't heard back from the town.
Charlie initiated the conversation. You'd been with me. Did Charlie just let me know?
I got a call from the individual and I forwarded that to Jeff and
Last week.
And we've now, they're operating, they're acting on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it late last week.
Okay. So you've been in touch with them?
What?
You've been in touch with them?
I talked to Jim and Jim's figuring out whether we need concrete base or whether granite would work. So I told Jim to reach out to Mr. Bear and help follow.
Okay. Well, that's up yesterday. He hadn't heard anything from the town. So somebody should reach out to him, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Thanks, Sally. Thank you, Sally.
We'll be seeing you again.
Yeah, you will.
All right, timestamp 1909. Ryan Holland, Christina Ward, Public Information Request. Are you here?
I am.
Hi, Christina.
Ryan is hung up at work.
Okay.
So he's open to make it in, so I figured I'd go first.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Christina Ward.
Hi, Christina.
I spend quite a bit of time in downtown Northfield, so I've had the opportunity to talk to residents on a daily basis. The one thing I've heard a few times is folks wondering where the town manager and where the select board stand on the issue that has recently come to light with Chief Gomez. The town's heard nothing. I've also heard it said more than once that the last good police chief prior to Gomez was Chief Bert Sanders. That's over 50 years ago. This tells me that getting a good police chief is not a simple thing. It's not as simple as shifting a former state police officer into the role or moving an officer from a different town into chief position. There's a shortage of police officers nationwide. Even with sign-on bonuses in place, we are still three officers short in this town. It seems that, I'm sorry?
Thank you.
It seems that as members of the board, you can't comment on what has occurred in Chief Gomez. That's my feeling, that's what I'm getting. But as individuals, I would assume you can. Does your position on the board prohibit you from making personal statements? What do each of you, independent from the board you serve on, where do you stand? The town wants to know. I hear it being talked about. Do any of you want to answer?
Does anybody want to go before me? You want to let me have it?
Well, let's hear what you say and then we'll see.
All right, I'll let them follow up. Some of the Northfield news, the most recent edition of the Northfield News under Chairman is a complete description of where we are.
Okay.
So we got, we got a, and by the way, hold on. So we got an ethics complaint that was filed through the state of Vermont and we acted on it. Now, this ethics complaints started, became a thing in January of this year. So to find out how this, how to proceed through this process, we contacted the state and when we did, their website says we can't offer support or resources to help you through this process. So we had to do it on our own. So we hired, from Board Commission, we hired a private investigator. The private investigator is doing the ethics investigation and is to, in my mind, it is like a whistleblower investigation. So it is confidential. And in the interview list, letters that have been sent out to the individuals, it states just that and it states statute that referenced that this is confidential. So the, what I know about the request for a public public information request, one of those requests was part of this investigation, which again, as I said, is confidential. And whether we are ever going to see the results of this in public, I doubt it because as I said, it is a, they're treating this as best as I can describe as a whistleblower, which means it's always confidential. And the only, there is, the only way that, so far as I know, is that for this to become public is through a legal process of lawsuit. Hopefully, we don't get there, that we can come to a resolution before that. There has been a request from the, from an individual to ask the courts for relief in getting this information. And I think the attorney is probably going to cite that this is part of the ethics investigation that's, for lack of a better word, protected from release of public information, release of documents. So with that, the board is helping to add on to anything, but I've made it public with, we've got the minutes of the meeting that made these decisions. And I put it out in Northfield News as best I could, hoping that people understand the integrity of this investigation is paramount for this board to come to a decision.
And, I'm sorry. Well, I guess my question is too, just individually, you know, do you support the chief? That like, I understand this is all going on, but nobody in the town has heard from anybody. Nobody really knows.
Oh.
Can I?
Do you support the chief? You know, do you?
Me, as Charlie Morris, I totally support the man.
Can I, as the manager speaker?
Go ahead.
So I hired Chief Gomez.
Yes.
It was a committee process and it was ultimately the manager's choice. I made the decision. Per the Vermont statutes, it's up to the manager. I made the final decision. I hired Chief Gomez and he has my full support.
Does anybody else in the board have any input they'd like to? Well, I'll just address, she asked personal. I support the chief. I made it clear to the chief. Chief knows where I stand.
Okay. I just, it's a public thing. I hear people talking about it in the coffee shop and other places and everybody's heard it here, it says.
To the extent that everybody pays attention to what we do here, I will say that I have always supported racial justice and have worked a long time on that. But I don't for a minute believe that all the people down on the common have heard me say that tonight.
Right.
I support the chief.
I support all of our town employees and staff when they're serving us and doing their jobs and many of them work really hard. And I have been so impressed with the chief since he's been here. He's been wonderful to work with. When people are saying, "I support the chief," what do they mean? Do they mean, "I support the human"? Do they mean, "I support every action he's taken in his job"? There's so many ways that that could be interpreted. And to me, I also want to separate that from my own personal views on any type of discrimination, including racial discrimination, and that they're just unacceptable and especially in the workplace. And we have a duty to make sure that discrimination is not happening in our workplace. But on a personal level, as somebody who's a citizen here also, I know that we have issues in our community, as we've heard about and we've been talking about lately. We clearly, I have children in the school. There are, it's gonna take a long time, unfortunately, I think, to really change our culture and the way we treat each other, but personally, I absolutely abhor racism, discrimination, mistreatment of anybody on any of their identities, age, disability, gender, all of it. And that this board did sign the Declaration of Inclusion and I think that everyone here, Mary, did you get to sign that?
No, I did not.
Mary did get to sign it, but the rest of us signed that.
That's all right. Mary, Mary was there long ago.
I know that you would sign it today, Mary. I feel strongly about that statement. And I personally commit to continuing to work on doing better.
Thank you. And I wasn't going to ask the manager where he stood because I had repeatedly asked you to make a statement before publicly, as you were asked by the president of the Rattler Dairy and L A C P. And I know at the recess of the April 22nd meeting, you approached me outside and said, "I support the chief. I hired the chief." But I didn't understand why you wouldn't speak publicly.
Well, you know, I, I think as we were saying, I support all the employees and I do my best to do what I claim to support all the employees. I do what's best for this town. You know, I work six days a week. I give it my best. I try to do the best. And I just, I spoke to other managers and I just have, you know, it was a question about trying to single out one person, even though I told you individually. So maybe that was an error on my side point, but again, the support has always been there, so.
I just thought it was important too to remember what MLK said, that in the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. And I did want to know, does the town of Northfield recognize MLK Day? Is that a recognized holiday in the town of Northfield? I can't find that information online.
Well, in the contract, in the two contracts, my understanding, it was added. So we are updating the personnel policies, which I had done and will have at the next board meeting, and that is added.
Okay, good.
You know, real quick, unfortunately, the policies are for old and so, but again, it's in the unanimous union contracts and it will be in the personnel policy, so it will be recognized.
It has been, it has been recognized as a day off for employees since the turn of the century.
Right. Well, I know it needs better, like, I understand that. I just don't know if we recognize that that's important. And I do, as Lydia stated, we do have a problem with racism in the town. If anybody's been paying attention to the school board meetings and everything else, having children being called the N-word slur is just unacceptable and things do need to change. And you were talking about signing the inclusion.
The Declaration of Inclusion.
Okay, because there was one signed back in 2023.
There was a Black Lives Matter statement that was also signed.
After the George Floyd.
And then the Declaration of Inclusion was of Vermont. Wide project to try to get, the goal was to get every community in Vermont to sign on.
We signed it in 2018.
Couldn't have been.
Since 2023, it was February 21st, 2023, on the town website. So my question was, has everybody gone through the training? Do new employees, are they brought up speed and do they go through the training?
The Declaration of Inclusion isn't attached to a training that I know of.
Oh, okay, because on the, the statement that stood up to me in that statement by the town was that the town has taken recent steps in furtherance of that commitment, including making our Declaration of Inclusion, preparing to institute diversity, equity, and inclusion training for all town employees.
Yes, that is true. And we did, the first year after we signed the declaration, we did some, conduct some virtual D E I training.
Okay.
I believe that most of us reported that we felt it was inadequate, that it wasn't, the depth and quality that we were looking for was in-person training, which is what we requested at our last select board goals meeting and have been working on and waiting for. And it's on our agenda to discuss further this evening.
Okay. And you already addressed the letter from Chief Gomez as being confidential. The problem is, when I requested that public record, I received nothing from the town manager. Not even a reason why. And per Vermont statute, I have to be told, "You're not getting this and this is why." I never received that.
Well, I eventually did tell you.
I never got an email stating why I wasn't getting that information. I got other emails about other requests that I had, but I did not get that. We were not to abide.
Oh, I apologize. I thought I'd send you that.
Well, it's, it's a problem when it's, when you're not following the law. And the other thing I think the town needs to know is that, you know, we have this right to public records. That is our right as residents. It is not easy to get them. First of all, you don't always get them in a timely manner. You don't get them at all. You don't get a reason. But secondly, you have to file a superior court in Montpelier. That costs $295 just to file. And then you hire an attorney. And that's going to cost you in the neighborhood of $10,000 to get public records, which we have a right to. That's a huge problem. We're paying the town manager's salary. He breaks the law. Now we're paying an attorney to defend the town manager. Then I'm going to go to court and get those records. It's going to cost me 10 grand. If I win the case, which is very likely, the town is going to pay me back that 10 grand. That's not okay.
I would add that the town attorney strongly advised us that that document was protected. So I know folks have said that I rely on the attorney too much, but I need to rely on the town attorney.
No, that's fine. It's just that I made the request before this was under investigation. That's another point to it. Secondly, who?
When did you make your, well, I'm not going to hold this out in court.
Right, I know, right.
I would like to follow this up with email.
That's fine. I can, I can tell you.
Right.
And I won't do it now. I don't know, Ryan is here, so he may want to step up. But the other thing is, you said that that letter, you know, is confidential. So the board has seen it, I would assume.
Yeah.
Okay. Who else has seen it? Have you showed that letter to anybody else? You've seen it, the board's seen it. Who else has seen it?
The attorney.
Other than the attorney? Have you showed it?
No.
You shared it with nobody else? Okay. Well, post Memorial Day, let me remind you of an Abraham Lincoln quote that "These dead shall..." that, "These dead shall not have died in vain. That this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom and that government of the people, by the people, for the people should not perish from the earth." And that's important. We need government for the people, by the people. That's it. And then if Ryan wants to go?
Brian, I explained the Northfield News article. Did you have a chance to see that, the letter from the chairman?
I was just looking at it.
Yeah, so that pretty much summarizes where we are with this document.
Okay.
And I don't know if the board has anything to add on that, but we are going to, you have filed a suit to commanda to seek relief, to get that letter released. The town attorney has said it's not eligible, it's considered protected. And the state of Vermont, the Ethics Committee, which I listed in that note from the chairman, says it's considered confidential. So beyond that, when we're proven wrong, that's where the board stands.
Okay, thank you. Am I still up to date?
We can talk to you guys?
Oh, yeah. Thank you for that. Hello, everyone. Just a reminder, I'm not attacking anyone personally. I still hope that is understood. I mean, I think the last time I talked, I addressed a lot of the direct issue of the public record request itself. There's been some developments since then, you know, obviously talked about it. I am here just intending to ask specifically about the statute section that says that you need to provide a verdict to copy if you were considering parts of it to be exempt. I guess you're saying maybe the entire thing, every single word of it is exempt. Well, I couldn't guess that, but we want.
We're treating this because of what you missed from the beginning of this and I'll take the, without objection, I'll repeat myself. But in January of this year, the state of Vermont enacted an ethics complaint process. It even has a commission with the director. And when an ethics complaint came in, they gave it to me. And when they gave it to me, and I realized that it's a member of the municipal family and I convinced the board, the board was very easy to convince, we, in order to stay objective, had to hire an investigator. The investigator was hired. Their investigator for the purpose of expediency has doubled their staff. It's up to two now. And they are going to give us a report based on interviews that people have been identified as part of all of the documents associated with this, which are multiple. I think, because every complaint for the ethics violation comes on a form, and I can't be accurate if it's a three-page form or more. But let's just say that there's about, there's somewhere between 15 and 18 documents that are being evaluated and that's going to, so the process is there. And we are going to rely on the state of Vermont, where they said that this ethics complaint is considered confidential. And until the state of Vermont says that, we can't, we're not gonna second guess that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I appreciate it. I do believe everyone is offering good faith here. But in return, I just hope that you guys will seriously consider my points. So that actually segues into the other thing I wanna talk about, which was my own ethics complaint directly connected to this. It's not too far off agenda to talk about.
Well, that sounds to me like it's an agenda item that we will entertain. But as far as operating these meetings, we are not going to bring up personnel matters in these meetings, no matter who it's against. You can put the bad lips on me, but everybody else is off limits during the public.
Well, I'd like to speak about it without bringing up who the complaint was against, but acknowledge that I made it. Don't feel like procedure was.
Have you made it through the state of Vermont?
I've made it through the town.
Okay.
Which is meant to be forwarded to the state of Vermont. Correct.
We're supposed to track all complaints and?
Was that to the ethics liaison?
It was to the person that, who was, I was directed to, submitted to on the form, which was Ken. I don't wanna start talking about people, individual people, but if you would just let me say what I have to say about the.
We'll see.
Okay. All right, so essentially, I just wanna know how, what unfolded in that situation squares with the statute, which is 24 B S A, section 1992 of the Municipal Code of Ethics. What I'm reading is, has some things omitted just because I don't feel like it applies, so I'm not claiming this is verbatim the entire thing. But it says, "Conflicts of interest mean a direct or indirect interest of a municipal officer in the outcome of a particular matter pending before the officer or the officer's body, or that is in conflict with the proper discharge of the officer's duties. Conflict of interest does not include any interest that is not greater than the other individual generally affected by the outcome of the matter." Again, without naming names, I submitted a ethics complaint because I felt that there was someone who had a personal stake in the outcome of whether I received my public record request.
I will follow up on that as soon as possible.
Okay.
It won't be tomorrow?
I understand. Go to you. So, I don't know. I want to be continuing though. If a municipal officer is confronted with a conflict of interest or the appearance of one, the officer shall immediately recuse themselves from the matter and not take further action on the matter or participate in any way or act to influence a decision regarding the matter. The officer shall make a public statement explaining the officer's recusal. An officer may continue to act in a matter involving the officer's conflict of interest or appearance of a conflict of interest if the officer first determines there is good cause for the officer to proceed and the officer submits a written non-recusal statement to the legislative body of the municipality regarding the nature of the conflict. So I guess, just my question would be, I did not see a statement, a public statement explaining a recusal nor a written non-recusal.
Right, and you sent, so I'm the liaison. You sent an email to me and I, and Lydia and Jeff just pointed out. Did I respond to that email?
You did respond with an email, but did not include those two things.
Okay, I'll follow up on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Board have any other comments, questions? So the next item on timestamp is, we're just trying something new, 7:30. Nancy Pet Clark wrote, she wrote us a letter. She had to go to Maine. She was gonna appear in person. And she's writing in lieu of making a scheduled personal appearance on Tuesday, March 27th, to the select board. "Over the years, I have made requests, complaints, please to get, please to get ditches and culverts cleaned out and dug out to improve the flow of water on Clark Road. To my frustration, repairs improvements were never made. I began to be more assertive in the past year as my driveway was placed separated from the access to the road because of overflow of the culvert and the consequence of flooding of the road. The stone that was meant to fill the newly created stream subsequently washed into my yard and destroyed flower beds. I appealed to the select board member, Sherman, sent videos to the town manager, Schultz, and wrote handwritten no copies to the foreman, Ruth Foreman Tucker. The Friday, Saturday, and Tori, torrential rains on May 16th and 17th again washed out the road and stranded my car and the driveway. Road foreman Carl Bailey came late Saturday afternoon to try and dig out the culvert, but to no avail. He and his crew showed up Sunday morning and after four hours of digging and dredging, finally got the water to flow in the ditch and through the culvert. He acknowledged that the lack of maintenance over the years had detrimental effects and led to band-aided and non-meaningful repairs. I am publicly thanking and acknowledging the vigilance of Carl Bailey and the crew and feel confident that he knows the roads, understands the needs for maintenance, and is willing to work hard to accomplish the goal of securing the roads. He has demonstrated all that in his repairs to the road in front of, he's just, he has demonstrated all of that in his repairs to the road in front of Clark, 65 Clark Road and has promised to return and complete this job and other needs on other parts of the road. I hope you will work with him to implement the ongoing maintenance and improvements. I very much appreciate you being willing to hear my plate and now my thanks. Thank you, Nancy Arpet. And that goes to you. So what we've, what I'm trying is timestamping things. So when I hear the timestamp, so if somebody goes back to the minutes in the video, they can do it, it may not work. The board doesn't even know I'm doing it, but it's something that I thought I'd try.
Oh, I noticed you were doing something.
Right, timestamped.
So you wanna make sure Ken puts them in the minutes?
I'm hoping that he will, you know.
If you wanna tell him.
He may not. It's up, I asked him. He may. It may require, it'll see.
All right.
But it would make it easier and there's a reason for that because I had to watch a 90-minute video to get to the last 13 minutes to find what I was looking for. Nothing was timestamped. Thank you very much. What I'd like to point out also is public participation. This is how public participation works. When Sally or Mrs. Ward, I know her first name, Janet Christina, or Ryan, or anybody wants to speak to the board, call and get on the agenda. Otherwise, you're gonna be put on public participation at the end of the agenda, which means you're gonna have to sit through liquor license renewals, minutes, warrants. Sometimes there's multiple warrants. And then a whole list of things that I, will work better than a sleeping pill. So I just wanna encourage you folks, any listening audience, if you wanna avoid that, get on the public participation so we can do what we did tonight. And then anything that comes at the end of the meeting, well, that's gonna be something you can discuss in public participation at the end of the meeting, 'cause you're not on the agenda. Something, I may say something that's offensive and you're gonna have to bring it up in public participation. But that's how it works and I think it works well. And we have policy for that. And also, there's a policy for time limiting. It's based on the board and thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Liquor Control Commission, item four. Timestamp is 1935. Liquor license renewal for the American Legion. Do I have a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for the American Legion?
Wait a minute, before you go any further, Ken has been trying to get your attention to explain something.
Well, the time is by circumvention, the time on the recording, you realize that?
Yeah, it's the time on the recording that's the timestamp.
Okay. Not on my clock?
No.
Fix that machine.
And none of us has got the eyes to see where we are right now. I don't know.
Well, you know, if it's off by a couple of minutes, it's better than having to sit down and watch a movie for 90 minutes to find what you're looking for. And there's video. But anyway, it's a thought. If it doesn't work, we won't do it anymore.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Figure out how it works.
I make a motion that we approve the application of the American Legion for liquor license renewals. Second, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the liquor license renewal for the American Legion, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, the liquor license renewal for the American Legion has been granted. Outside consumption permit for the American Legion. Do I have a motion to approve the outside consumption permit for the American Legion?
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion?
Is that a repeat one or where did they do it?
Yeah, they have the area between the sidewalk and their building. So it's not in the sidewalk.
Picknick tables, directly in front of the blackboard and actually.
I think they've been looking for.
So we no longer get those requests in the packets?
No, I think, I was trying to remember that. I think we asked.
Yeah, again, it's on private property. It's just.
Yeah, Dave was just asking about, we used to get, like, we don't get any paperwork with these anymore.
Yeah, so the state of Vermont has changed the format?
Yeah. It's just hard to know. No. You're gonna tell us if there's information that.
And we usually get a statement from the chief of police and/or the town clerk?
That there haven't been any issues or violations in them?
You get that at the beginning of the year, as per the previous calendar year.
Yeah.
So there's no issues, right?
No.
So that one statement is a blanket statement then? Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the outside consumption permit for the American Legion, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, approval for the American Legion outside consumption permit has been granted. Approval of minutes for May 13th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 13th?
So moved.
Second, are there any, is there any discussion about the minutes? Dave?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm fine. Thank you.
I'm fine too.
Hearing none, all in favor of approving the May 13th minutes, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And I am not going to vote, 'cause I have one here. So I will have it 4 dot 0 dot 0. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of warrant, warrant 22-25 and 22-25 A through C, for a total of $1,229,920. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, hearing the motion in the second, is there any discussion over warrant 22-25 and 22-25 A through C?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Yes, on page seven. We had a problem with the loader and a problem with the doctor. What was the problem?
So with the excavator, there was a, the depth, you know, the depth is like cooling liquid that always new trucks have and create a problem. So there was a sensor, what I was told. And then it was some additional issues related to that. And then the other was, I think it was with the truck, it was a frame-type issue. There was either an axle or something that had some issues. So they, unfortunately, they had to tow it.
Is it gonna get fixed?
Yeah.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Depth is diesel emissions for, it reduces the pollutants coming out of a diesel engine.
And it's, on newer trucks, it's been.
It's, I don't have a diesel within.
It's unfortunate. I've talked to other towns. It's become a real nightmare.
It is. Madam Sherman?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, 'cause I don't know how things work. On page seven, there is the cost of the image transfer from the fee bridge, image transfer fee from the bridge cameras. Is that a regular expense?
It is, yeah.
Okay. How often does that happen? Just like here, you have to.
I'll have to check. I can't remember how often, but.
It's pretty often.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not sure how often either, but more than a couple times a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe quarterly.
Yeah.
It isn't expensive. And we need to do a cost-benefit analysis, I think, to find out if we're getting it. Did we get anything ever yet?
No, we never were able to receive money, so we can do a cost-benefit.
We could get all our money back in one major event potentially.
That's true.
Consider it.
We could get all our money back, although we wanna ask them. We might.
$2,500 fine if the notch doesn't help.
The deterrent, yeah. The question that I have is that, what's, the last time that I asked, we were told that they, attorney, that the lawyers, it was held up in legal things. And I wanted to know, what was the outcome of all of this?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, it was a question about where that damage had occurred, 'cause there was a number of areas that were damaged. So it was hard to pinpoint specifically.
Well.
You mean we had cameras? Can I?
Yeah, you go ahead.
We had cameras that documented an accident and it was hard to.
Well, that one was actually witnessed by somebody and they tore off and then the police came. So they got the tag, but it was difficult to figure out exactly 'cause there were so many parts of the bridge that were damaged. So it wasn't caught on the camera. It was caught by a witness who called it in.
What about the one which was a repair truck? That was a different one?
Well, that was the one with the cable company.
Yeah? I don't know. There's been more than one and.
That we've been able to identify?
Yes. And what has been the outcome of any of that?
Again, unfortunately, the only one that we hadn't identified was that one. And again, we weren't able to collect. Again, unfortunately, the only one that we hadn't identified was that one, and again, we weren't able to collect.
Yeah, I think the cost benefit analysis is important here, and then I also wanted to ask about, I forgot what page it was here. Bear with me.
The one's option.
Jeez, I'm, can I find this? There it is. Page twelve, and it says, "The wayfinding sign system," which I'm all favored that, by the way, I really like it, but it's thirty-eight hundred dollars, and I'm wondering, is that thirty-eight hundred dollars from the grant? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, so...
How do you know that?
Because I'm on the board.
Wow!
You know, unfortunately, I don't speak prematurely, but I think that's kind of the last component, as I heard.
Yeah, the grant is wrapped up.
Yeah.
Well, I bet that's a good feeling.
Oh my gosh, it has been a long haul. Debbie Zorro is champion.
I know.
Yeah, that was the stuff that I was talking about at our last meeting at the end, that I was really excited about, that the signs are finally in the ground.
Yeah.
Jason Andres designed them, Wood and Wood constructed them, and helped with the insulation. Sam and Cody from the town crew were out there with Skidzie and Augur, and it was really a phenomenal collaboration between the town and Norwich, and...
And Holland Wright, carrying that last, that the last ones up to now.
They did, and there's a nice picture that, I don't know who it was, David Mears put in the Northfield News this past month.
Very good.
Good to ask about it, though, Mary. It doesn't say the board part right there, so...
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving twenty-two twenty-five and twenty-two twenty-five A through C warrant for one million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, do so by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, the warrant twenty-two twenty-five A through C has been approved. Now, do I have a motion to approve warrant twenty-three twenty-five A for a total of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-four cents?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Second, is, this is for Cox Brook paving, are there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this...
I have some discussion.
Oh, you do, I have some.
You know, for Cox Brook paving, when is the crosswalk gonna get done?
Oh, you mean in the falls?
Yeah, well, I buy crosswalk paving.
Yeah, yeah, so the contractor assured me that they'd be here Thursday, that the weather threw them off a bit, but absolutely, I got one hundred percent assurances that they will be here Thursday.
They after tomorrow.
Right.
Okay, I'm holding people back from the falls, wanting to take their house paint out there and do the crosswalk themselves.
Well, yeah.
Well, the crosswalk is the state there.
I know, I'm just saying that...
Yeah, the sidewalks.
This has been going on since the turn of the century.
It's been going on since I've been here.
Apparently, the closer it gets, the more anxious people are getting, but if you remember Everett Greenslip, he's been asking for this since the year two thousand.
Well, and I would add, I know it's a little off topic, the state denied us twice since I've been here, and I kept trying, and I finally got a grant, and I finally convinced them to do that. I guess I got the right person, so, like I said, you know, try, try, try. And again, the state's paying for half of it.
You're here today here first.
All right, what's that got to do with...
Thursday.
What's that got to do with Cox Brook paving law?
It's nearby.
All in favor of approving the law for Cox Brook paving, do so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions, hearing none, we approve the payment of the warrant. And do I have a motion to receive the biweekly payroll of May eleventh through May eleventh for a total of one hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents?
So moved.
Second, is there any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passed, the biweekly payroll has been received.
Think you need to call for the vote, sir.
You what?
You need to call for the vote?
Oh, yeah, probably so. All in favor, say it. All in favor of approving something that's already been done, please do so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions, as the motion passes?
They don't, does everybody understand that what they're telling us is, they're asking us to accrue payments to these individuals who work for the town, whom they paid on the sixteenth of May? Okay, just so you know.
Just so we know what's going on, what it's all about.
Do you know why we're laughing when we do this? Because it's...
Because we like to have a good time every now and again. The agenda continues, and we now go into the next topic, which is the Cheney Farm water tank replacement project. Jeff has been asked for, and is going to produce a scenario, synopsis of what has happened up there.
All right, thank you. So as you may have heard, the contractor that's working on the tank, oh, somebody raised it, the contractor working to replace the tanks and reservoir on the Cheney Farm project was installing the road, or upgrading the existing road there, and it was our understanding that the entire time, they would just be upgrading that existing road. Then they found out that there was an issue with large trucks trying to make a turn up onto the Cheney Farm at the turn down just above Byham, Byham Street. So the contractor said that they wanted to reach out to Norwich and use Norwich's property to access the property, and so, and they said that they would still use town proper, I'm sorry, the town existing roads, and so, and the plan showed limits of disturbance on that property. And so, it was our understanding that they would continue to make improvements to the road and not cut across the Cheney Farm property, and I did tell those folks that that is a very important piece of property, and they needed to steer clear of that, so the contractor did negotiate with Norwich and receive permission to come up through their property, come across their quarry, and then start out towards town property, so, I guess it was...
So the vendor negotiated with Norwich on behalf of the town?
Nope, it was completely separate, because that was...
It's a town project, right?
Right. So, and I guess it was the Tuesday prior to the last select board, meaning I did receive a call from folks very concerned about it looking like the contractor was gonna veer off Norwich property, veer away from the access road, and go on to the Cheney Farm, so I immediately called the contractor, the engineer, and I said, "Hey, we did not approve you going across that, it's not supposed to happen," and so the contractor, I'm sorry, the engineer, said that he'd go up there and talk to the contractor. Well, he got up there, and the contractor had already headed across the field, and so I spoke with these folks, and Jim Musai and I went out onto the site, saying, "What gives? You were told that you, you told us that you were gonna stay on these existing roads." I said, "Well, when they got to that point, crossing from Norwich on to the Cheney Farm, to the left where they were gonna go to get to that road, it was extremely steep and there was ledge, and so we had to go then," I said, "Well, you didn't tell us this," the contractor admitted, goes, "No, we didn't reach out to the town," and I said, "Well, this is not acceptable, this is not good, this is completely different from what our understanding was," so then we pulled out the plans, and I got the engineer to see if they violated the plans, and specifically, the limits of disturbance. So the engineer's come back and says that they did veer off the limits of disturbance on that plant, however, they did state that they feel that they're in compliance with the stormwater permit, because they were given permission to disturb two point six acres of land, and they feel that they have not exceeded the limits of two point six acres, and I said, "Well," and the engineer said, it's his opinion that he doesn't see that it violated any permits, and I said, "Well, we're gonna have to investigate that further." The engineer today told me, he looked at it, he said, "It's up to the contractor," and I said, "Well, you folks are gonna figure this out, because, you know, I will investigate this, so that needs to be investigated." You know, it's an unfortunate situation, and if you look at the lay of the land, I can understand why those folks did that, but again, what they should have done was come to the town and said, "Hey, change of plans, we are not, we have to veer across this area," and I would have said, "Time out, give us a chance." One area on the site, they did say that they have completely stayed away from the protected archaeological site. They have not disturbed that, they said they would be in big trouble if they disturbed that, so again, unfortunately, there is a road across the property. I guess it's important to note that, once the property, once the project's done, they'll pull the material out, grade it, and see, and hopefully that will restore them, so obviously, I was distraught, very upset, that these folks did not contact us, and they deviated from what they originally were supposed to do.
Dave, you have any comments?
No, sir.
Lydia?
No, I think that in going up there, I can also see why they chose what they chose, and as somebody who spends a lot of time up there, it does make me wonder about, in the planning process, this should have been more obvious to anybody who was, and they did a lot of planning for this project, so at some point, they should have noticed the slopes and the turns, and I can't imagine that that would be at the last minute, that they would have noticed the road up there had such a sharp turn. So I guess it's just more in like forward thinking, if we're ever to see something, like they're gonna be working with Norwich again, why wouldn't we also be kept in the loop on that conversation? That would have helped us understand what they were thinking of. I do see that the way it is now, the truck traffic is using the road that they created, and it is potentially less dangerous to the public, because there's a lot of trail use up there, so it means that they're driving between the site and the staging area, and they're not using the main route that's used by bikers and pedestrians as frequently, so there's some potential positives to this, but when we learn, you know, when it happens to us as a surprise, rather than a plan, it's just unfortunate, and I hope that they're, that the contractor really understands that we expect better communication for the duration of this project, and that we're going to be paying attention, and I think they're doing, everybody I've interacted with has been so friendly and polite and courteous, and they are keeping a very clean area, and they installed the roads in such a way that they didn't just wash out in the rains, so, and this is a really important project, which we really need to get done, so I just am sad that it happened in a way that then made our community feel surprised, and like we weren't telling them the truth about what was gonna happen up there.
I mean, I just would add, I mean, there is a lot of oversight in the contracts. The municipalities, through the loans, are paying quite a bit to have an onsite engineer, so there is an onsite person for both projects onsite daily, and again...
But if they're gonna build a road without us knowing or giving permission, that is a pretty extreme thing. It's just, I know that you're frustrated too, but it's just, I... Yeah.
John? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, Mary and I were up there yesterday.
And so was your wife, Carolyn.
Yes.
I'm sorry about what happened.
She was very closely examining that road.
She was very intimate with that road.
Well, I find there is not an appropriate silt fence along the road, there are just the...
It's a little strong.
A little strong.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, we've talked about that, I've gone up there, they're saying there's ledge or something, and I said, you know, they pointed that out, but they've gotta do that.
Yeah, sorry, John, can I add one little bit, where you can hit me, about silt fencing?
Sure.
Also, the, where they're staging on the top of the quarry, it's not on our land, but they're dumping their dump trucks in the big piles, and the trail goes underneath the piles, and there have been multiple rocks that have fallen down from the big piles, so I also wondered if they should have had some sort of fencing or something there, I mean, the piles are so huge, I don't know how they would keep that in, but that there's...
They could have built a barn.
Yeah, or...
They got the equipment to build a barn.
Yeah. Go ahead, John.
And then the second thing is, it looks like they are fostering the growth of knotweed up there. I mean, there's places where it's been cleared off, and now the knotweed is jumping up, and so on.
Good observation.
Yeah, well, Mike brought that up, and Jeff said it was in the contract, that they cannot spread invasives during construction, correct?
So I'm meeting with them upside down inside.
And there's a parking area where the trucks are, where the trucks were on yesterday. Is that gonna remain, or is that going to be empty by July?
They made a parking area down off of the existing road, like, as you go up towards the tanks on the left, they made a parking lot area.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was the wishes of board, and they wanted to leave that.
Take a look at your chart, bring out the chart and answer the question accurately, and it's on your map, right?
Well, it's within the clearance area, it doesn't show a parking area, but it's a cleared area, so it is shown there, but they have to restore some of the road, but the board did say that they were looking for a parking area, so if it's the desire of the board, we'll make sure it remains.
That's probably still an open question, whether it remains or not, because it did come up.
It sounded like the board wanted it.
Well, you need to, we need to have that discussion sooner rather than later, because they're gonna button up in less than eight meetings' time, I think.
Yeah.
So we need to focus on that, and bring that back to whether, how we're gonna restore that, and there are roots. There's commissions and committees that need to be pulsed on that, on what they want, because they've got a huge amount of energy and effort, they went on to developing the town forest, and I think they have ownership, partial ownership of what happens up there, and they need to have a consensus to tell us what they'd like to see, if they want it restored, you can restore it, it will be restored, by the way.
Well, Charlie, it will be restored? We haven't had that conversation.
The highway will be restored.
Oh, I got it.
The access road will be restored, and anything else that we want restored will be restored. But the scar that now, we, the property owners, have a road that we had not intended on having, that is going to be restored as close to possible, as it was, I hope, including the swales, that rather than just have a brass in scar on the land, I hope that they can see it, and that's the reason they're stocking the material. I jumped in front of Lady Schurhot, do you have anything?
Well, I have two things, and they're not related to each other. First of all, I asked, and I asked Jeff Suaro, who is chair or former chair, I can't remember, of the Conservation Commission, and she wrote that "The town forest access feasibility plan of several years ago with D and K and regional planning, found multiple issues with development of parking in Cheney Field." Lydia knows all these specifics. The solution was supposed to be expanded parking at the Shaw, but that had to be cut from the grant. So, concerns were steepness of Byham Hill Road... So concerns were steepness of Byham Hill Road, Byham Road, and the ability to maintain it in winter. And D and K did not think the lower area would work for parking. And there was significant neighborhood opposition. So.
Wasn't that on the road?
Yeah. So I mean, there, this issue is one that there is not clear agreement on. Many people in the public feel that we do not have access to our town forest as a resource. And there's an accessibility issue with the current situation and expecting people to park in town or park at the Shaw to get all the way up. It means like people that would be able to enjoy Cheney Fields but cannot do that, cannot access Cheney Fields. So the study had several alternatives. And and it was largely the neighborhood of which I reside in that felt they didn't want it. And they have, you know, reasons, concerns about the road and stuff. But this is also, the road has now been improved and a parking area has been created. So I think it's time to look at the plan again. Have the discussions, find out what the concerns are. And what are the pros and cons to it of pros are maybe increasing accessibility, allowing more people to access the town forest. That's an incredible resource. But would this be easy to maintain or not? Would there be problems with cars, et cetera? It deserves a full conversation.
The second thing.
And everybody should look at this study.
Yeah. The second thing that I wanted to ask about, which has nothing, I have heard thing comment beside. The second thing is when it was discovered that they that they did this on the Cheney Field, they, we got letters. And one of the letters I recall was from David Neers. And David Neers suggested, and he has a title too. What's his title?
He is the chair of the Conservation Commission.
He is the chair of the Conservation Commission. And he said, what is the, somehow he raised the issue, what is the state gonna say about the environmental impact of this road? And who's culpable when the state comes hunting for somebody who's culpable? And it it occurs to me that if this happened without us knowing, we are absolved of any culpability. And it falls on the contractor.
That's correct. And so in conversations with the engineer, it's his, it's the engineer's opinion that the contractor is responsible for the obtaining the permits and working in compliance with the permits. So based on that, it's my opinion that if they violated the permits, then the fines, if any, or any kind of slap on the hand or fines will be assessed towards the contractor.
So I think if we haven't, if we didn't, if we didn't give them permission to do that dirty deed, then any dirt that results is on them and not on us.
Yeah, the engineers, that in writing, it's it's the contractor.
Then the third thing is just a comment, more like a question, which is that if they could do all of that that we saw yesterday, from digging up, you know, making that flat, that staging area above the quarry, all the way to making the new road with with the fabric underneath it, you know, and with with a stay mat, if, and the road is 30 feet wide. And if they can do all that, why couldn't they just make it easier to turn around at Byham, on Byham Hill?
So
They couldn't do that.
Yeah, I I think they would have preferred to do that. What I was told is that there is an enormous amount of ledge. And they would have had to remove a significant amount of trees. And they felt that that would be more expensive, but also do more harm to the property, again, i.e. ledge, trees, and those type of things. Again, I think they'd prefer to have done that shorter. Less of a haul. But again, there and again, as I think Lydia said, I think there should have been better communications when it comes to moving very large cranes and cement trucks come through there. And Jim and I had that same comment. So how are they gonna get those up there?
So Jeff produced a, an overview, a graphic. Have you got that?
Um, I, the only thing I have is the original plans. I, as you saw in the email I sent, I asked the engineer to get a contract.
No, I'm talking about, I, on Friday, I asked you to create an overview the same size as the plot maps. So we could demonstrate what we're talking to the people here in the audience. We're gonna do, you had a Google map. That was, yes, that was one of them, but I asked you to get it as as big as you could.
Yeah, so that was.
That's all you've got?
Yeah, that was the one.
Well, sadly, in order, this is enough. All right. I'm sorry. Are you done, Mary?
Yeah, I'm done.
So.
The town in Northfield experienced something that no property owner wants to experience. That is, something was done on our property that we did not approve of. However, the, my observation in that of more than just one set of eyes, if if the contract had been followed by the letter to Lydia's point, we would have had to, they, the contractor would have had to remove a huge amount of trees and ledge. Instead, they could go to a place using a road that they already developed, that they harvested material for, to improve everything that existed. They looked across the field and they said, we don't have to take all those trees down and knock all that ledge down. We can go straight through these two trees and not even have to take a tree down. That was my impression. I was going to demonstrate that tonight with a big chart. The chart's not here. You can look on it. If you go Google it, you can see what I'm talking about. It was just gonna be enlarged. The Google map I speak of shows Byham Hill, Quarry Hill, and the Cheney Farm Field. So it was, I, there, I think maybe there's a plus in that, that we didn't have to expend the resources to take down a number of trees. And I haven't gone up there to count the trees, but we're under the consensus that it was 40. So in a way, I think it's better what they did. But it's rude to come home from a day's work and find out that your contractor has done something that you didn't agree to. That's just not right. And that's where we are. And how I, that's gonna sugar off if you think that we're gonna forget about that. When it comes time to settle the bills and make things, true, true things up or write an evaluation or a recommendation, I think it'll, I I do not think Amnesia is going to sit down. Please.
I just remembered, we received an email from a member of the public who uses the Trail Network concerned that trail users could just suddenly come into the construction zone and there's no signage warning. And there's a lot of different entry points where trail users come through. And I know you contacted the contractor and they said they would put up signs. As far as I've seen, as recently as today, there are no signs.
Yeah, we will get those up.
So just FYI, I don't know whether, they gave you a date when they'd have them up, but that seems like it's in everybody's interest to not have a pedestrian dump truck.
Incident?
Incident, yeah.
Again.
And these are, these are big dump trucks. They got
Yeah, like I said, everybody's been very conscientious that I've come across, but it could, there's sharp, like sharp corners, blind corners. And if you entered the Trail Network through the Shaw Center, you wouldn't have any clue that, to be looking out for. If you go up Byham, you probably have a clue, but.
So we have a safety of ship issue. We need to be make sure that it is safe.
Yeah.
Dennis, you got something?
No, I'm all set, Charlie. I think everybody's covered what I was.
All right, cool. Anybody else in the online audience? Anybody else in the audience here? Take it here, hearing none. We'll continue on with tonight's agenda. Next one is 2025 Memorial Park Pool Schedule and Fees. In our package, you see that there is schedules and fees. It does not reference what the fees are being adjusted from. But do we have a motion to approve the 2025 Memorial Park Pools and Fees Schedules? Schedule and fees.
I believe the one change is referenced in the manager's report.
So move. Second. Aye. Is there any discussion? And Ken, what was your point?
Jeff's minutes report did point out the changes from last year.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. Is this what we discussed in budget season?
Yes. So during budgets, the general consensus was that free lessons, swim lessons, we didn't get into the specifics. Shannon and I sat down and originally Shannon said, just give them one free. And I said, no, we gotta do more than that. And so I said two, and she said, oh, okay. But it's ultimately, you know, your decision. So we settled on two. And Shannon's hesitation about giving four lessons is that, you know, if you have families, it would bump others out. So we, as a compromise vote, two free lessons would meet, you know, Shannon's thought, but also most importantly, meet the board's desire to give free lessons.
Because we were gonna use the money that was originally reserved for that last year that didn't get implemented? Or is that correct?
Right.
But did we, and we did we forecast an increase in fees in the budget? That's the more direct.
I'll have to check. I think Lori's pretty good about that. I I know we discussed it. Oh, I'll double check.
No, did we discuss it in the budget process? Or is this something that's gonna be outside, a surplus to the budget? That's all.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Very good. In the manager's report, he reflects that there hasn't been an fee increase in five years?
Yes.
For access to the pool?
Right.
Thank you. I'm all set.
I'm gonna say the thing I say every year right now is that I am hopeful that we will do advertising to the public that and it would be so lovely if we'd include like a picture of the pool. There's still so many people that don't know that we have such a lovely pool. I think seeing a picture of it helps because it's kind of tucked away. And I hope that everyone here will help spread the word that there's free swimming lessons for Northfield residents. When Jeff says two lessons, not two singular lessons, it's two sessions. The sessions are what are they, eight, eight days long? So four, four in one week and four in another week. So and we also put funds in the budget for some special events that I also would love to see on a calendar and being advertised. I think we put, yeah, so that people know in advance and can look forward to them. But I'm so excited to see the pool opening soon and that we're finally in warmer months.
A warmer minute.
Yes, a warmer day, two days.
We'll say. John, any comments?
No, thanks.
Mary?
Um, I had the same comment that that Dave, that he stole my thunder.
Sorry.
It happens.
I have.
There's no further, there's no further discussion? All in favor of approving the 2025 Memorial Park Schedule and Fees? Do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there objections or abstentions? Hearing none, the 25 Memorial Park Schedule and Fees has been approved. It's no longer a draft. So in your budget, we have the review and approval of the fiscal year 2025-26 water and sewer rates. Do I have a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
All right, now open for discussion. Jeff, you wanna run with this, please?
Sure. So as you know, the utility commission spends April and May doing utility budgets. They put together the budget. Once the utility commission approves the budget, we send it to the select board and ask the select board to review and approve the rates based on that budget. As you'll see from the sheet that was provided, the proposed rates, if adopted, will result in a 2.65% rate increase for the average single-family homeowner. Just as an aside, it's kind of quirky, the water rates are not increasing, but the sewer rate is increasing. But again, in terms of the bill, it'll be 2.65% rate increase. We didn't include it, any surplus or ARPA funds. Real quick, as an aside, we're pleased to announce that water usage, i.e. revenue to the utilities, has been increasing over the last year or so. As we talked about during COVID, particularly the university and others, we saw a dip in revenues. We're obviously very concerned, but fortunately, those usages are starting to come up and is able for us to stabilize the, the rates in the budget. So again, only two point, only 2.65% rate increase.
Is there any discussion? Do we usually receive a copy of the budgets?
You do. And I noticed that was an oversight. I'll make sure you get this.
I would like one, please. Would you like to table this until you have that copy?
No, no.
All right. Don, aye? Do you have any?
No.
Mary?
Nothing.
All right. Is there any other discussion from the board? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the 2025-26 water and sewer rates to increase the total rate by 2.65%? 65%? Do so by saying aye.
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 You've approved, aye, that's 5-0, and we approve the new water and sewer rates. Approval of the 25 Northfield Mount Local Emergency Management Plan. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? Jeff, do you want to take this? Does anybody have any purpose for discussion? Or you wanna you have reason to discuss? Okay.
What was Jeff gonna say, an introduction or?
Go ahead, start.
Yeah, just each year, state asks municipalities to adopt the local emergency management plan. It's an important document. Without these documents, the towns risk losing certain grant funds, but it also does risk not be eligible for federal reimbursement, federal and state reimbursement for hazard funds, flooding funds. So again, it's a very important document. We were fortunate, I worked on this in part with somebody from Vermont Emergency Management. They were very helpful. So that, there's that document. And then we also did put together the Emergency Management Supplement, which we took all comments that we received before and tried our best to incorporate those in. So bringing it full circle, very important document.
Comments, concerns, please.
Awesome.
There's a couple typos, but I'll just, you know, give you a copy that I, with the marked up on typos. And then, okay, questions for the first one? Okay, on page four, the public information and warning. It mentions that we can send Vermont alert messages on behalf of our community, but I don't know that we ever signed, have we signed up to be able to do that?
Um, I, I have, I'm working on that. I can request, I'm sorry, the town can request the state to put those out.
Yeah.
But I'm working to get it so we don't have to go through.
Right, so that we can just do it ourselves.
Yeah, I, I found.
Because it seems like a lot of towns are doing that more for themselves now. I know even in that last storm we had, I was getting alert messages from other communities. And it's a great fast way to know a lead a road's closed or something that's very, you know, timely information wise. So it'd be great if we are able to do that as well.
I would, if I could, though.
Yeah.
I did get confirmation that pets are allowed at the school.
Great, that was one of my other questions.
Yeah, so yeah, I spoke to the facilities person there and they specifically said, yes, we have a big facility and we think that's appropriate.
Okay.
And so it's checked.
I see that it's checked. Awesome. So that was on purpose. And maybe we can follow up with that group that Mary, that we got the email from, that Mary brought up last time.
I was just gonna ask about that.
Yeah, that helps with pet stuff so that maybe they'd have supplies or skills or.
It's called the Central Vermont Disaster Animal Response Team. And they sent us a request asking if we had a plan. And they sent us a request asking if we had a plan. And then I see here that we do have one, which we didn't know last, last year.
We didn't know before, yeah, this is real.
So now we know that their pets are allowed, so we need to respond to those people and open up a dialogue with those people because they may have input and information and resources that can help the school, not necessarily that we have to do the work, but maybe we can get those people.
Yep. That's great news, and then we'll figure out if we have to be communicating with the public about opening shelters, how to make sure people know.
Yeah.
Which one's which, and which ones opened. Because we often have found that, especially for a minor, a minor emergency, that it's easier to open Norwich, so. But I think if pets needed to be evacuated, probably would be a more major incident going on. Then the only other, this is sort of a small question on page nine. It says the EM coordinator, and it says from POC lists above, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that was kind of.
Where it means above, like where is above?
Yeah, it was kind of quirky. So I listed, as you see, we did list some both, so, yeah, it was kind of quirky. So I just listed those folks. So I thought that was, listing those four, five is sufficient, but.
Okay, the people that are listed down below, like the fire chief and the EMS chief, those people? Okay, yeah, maybe just eliminate where it says above.
Yeah, that, yeah, seriously.
Because I was just trying to go looking or.
Yeah, I stumbled over that, kept, I read it like three times, yeah.
And the last thing on this one was the page 10, we have an empty slot for an animal control officer in that.
Yeah, so that's a tough one. So we've, for the most part, we've been relying on the police department, and that's tough being a short staff. There is an organization called Random Rescue that I guess there's a question about whether they're involved, but there is another group, per fee, will, will pick those up.
I know, I see us having a lot of minor dog issues that really seem like they don't rise the level of the police department needing to be involved, but there's no bites or, you know, vicious parts, but like there's threatening or loose dogs, and it's really unclear, I think, to the community who to call and what to do, so.
So we can put something out, so we don't encourage, for those minor ones, yeah, we don't encourage the police. What we do encourage is that they call the health officer or the assistant, which is myself, and actually, we've had two or three calls lately, and so Mitch and I have written to these owners and said, you know, this is the process, you need to get the dog under control. If it continues, then we have the potential to take it to the board of health, which is the select board, and they can take it. Much more discretionary measure.
Okay. Well, maybe it's just, yeah, communicating elsewhere, or considering whether we need an animal control officer at a future date, but I just noticed that it was empty. I think that, I'll let somebody else have a turn and those other documents.
Now, on page two of this, at the bottom, it says use municipal resources, et cetera. And who is authorized to make emergency purchases and what are their spending limits? I don't see any spending.
Yeah, yeah, we have to, I shouldn't say per, per the policy, or per, I will add per the purchasing policy.
Okay.
And those are questions, so maybe should there be a question like that?
Shouldn't be something. On page, this one, on page two, three, two, four. Backup power. Now, it seems like we got a generator.
Yeah.
So it's. What is, it says none.
Okay, that, that was, yeah, I got the point, yeah, thank you. We, in the, in the main document, it does list the generators, but you're right, in the supplement, so add generators, yeah.
And on two, four, it says a computer. Where is it? Who has it?
So, ambulance folks and Pete and the manager have access to computers, so they're laptops.
Yeah, but that needs to be on?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I got, thank you.
I had a couple of things. One is just on the very back page, number 10 of the board part, it doesn't have any email from myself, from me.
From what?
No email from me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I see that a lot of my colleagues, except for Mr. Stevens here, have northfield.vt.us. I forgot, why don't I have that?
She decided not to use it at one point.
Yeah, so I think since everybody else is using it, I think I should use it too.
Yeah.
And I think, I don't want to tattle, but I think there's a couple of other board members that, right?
Jones got another email, not a town one listed, but, and Charlie has another town one listed. On here, I don't know if you want them updated to your town emails, or?
Did I miss that?
It's a TDS for you and a Yahoo for Jones.
Ah, yes, I wanted updated. What do you want?
I want what you got.
Mary wants a northfield.vt.us email, please put that on there, we'll table discussion, we'll table action on this until all the, well, until the next meeting when all.
Wait, I have one more thing.
Oh, please.
I wanted to say, can there be a link to this document posted on the town website so people can look at it?
Doesn't it have to be?
It sounds like it was posted on the website already last year, it's going to be put, it's going to be put there as well.
Okay.
Jeff, when does this need to be, is there a date it has to be updated by?
In June.
Okay, so we have time to table it till the next meeting?
Well, we're gonna table it, there's been too much discussion on that.
No, I just, I just want to make sure we, like, we're gonna miss the deadline because it's important to have.
And whatever, tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna fix it. So the next board, next time? So page 10, I mean, excuse me, six, one. So we have inconsistency, at the beginning it lists Norwich University does not allow pets. On the last page, it does allow pets.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
And I was told we do, they do not allow pets.
Well, they, yeah.
So we just need to fix that.
Yeah, thanks.
You were told they do die?
At Norwich.
At Norwich.
Just school is now a yes?
An emergency plan has to be bulletproof for details and data, because when you are using the emergency plan, your wits are already being stressed to the nines. So please, let's table this to our next meeting, let's correct all of the errors that we've identified, and let's get this cleaned up so when someone, if someone has to use it, it actually works. Thank you.
So I understand all select board members have been using municipal websites?
Northfield.vt.us, yes.
Okay, because it was, that was in one case, but some people dropped out.
Yes.
That's right.
With difficulty in logging in, things like that.
Yes, it was hard.
I dropped out when I first got on this board because of the request for procedure, promises of riches and the request for marriage. And that, that look is now, they've cleaned it up, I have not, I don't know that I've had a spam the whole time I've been using it since March, so that's a good sign. But they test you, they'll throw you something in there to try and click, click you on it, you know?
John, did you, would you like an order? He's got one.
I theoretically have one, but I don't know how to access.
Go to deceive Doug.
Yeah, I think.
Doug will speak you up.
I think they may have discontinued your Norwich one.
Which one?
Yes, yeah.
So if they're not in use, we don't, we discontinue.
Welcome to the floor. So we table that discussion, if there's no objections, great. Next one is the diversity, equity, and inclusion DIA training. I failed to give any language to Jeff, but I have shared it with, and I have this to share, the DEI training that we've had has failed twice. The first time, it was, it was promoted as being a introduction to what it's going to entail, and then we had, if you remember, that was the eighth, April 8th meeting, where I, she came down and started training, and we had to cut it short because we had a meeting that went quite some time, if you remember. So we were not prepared to receive that training. The second time was apparently confusion when I was coming back from Canada on the 19th of December. So, three strikes is a term?
May.
May.
Since December, sorry.
Did I say since December? It's been a long day.
Yeah.
So, what I would like to do is to create an amendment to our personnel policy, which reads, to amend our personnel policy, require all employees of the town of Northfield to attend DEI training and continuing education regarding DEI, consistent with the Declaration of Inclusion of 13th December 2022. Does anybody, is there a motion to approve that, or does anybody have any words or language that they would like to add to that?
Sounds like Jeff has a draft of the personnel policy that he's bringing to us to our next meeting. Could this be added to that and brought to us all together? Or does it need to, do you want to do it separately, Charlie?
Well, the reason I thought we would do it now, the personnel policy may or may, this should be included in the personnel policy, but I think if we adopt it tonight, we can then move to the next step, which is to contact the representative, and I would like to have a board member volunteer for that position and work with our schedule to commence the training for the board.
Have a look.
I, but I suspected, I was hoping you would. So if we adopt this, then we know that management knows that we're serious about it, the state knows that we're going to try and correct from missing two training opportunities and come up with a, an actual training episode that is done in-house. So essentially removing the town manager from the process of scheduling this until we meet him, we're gonna do it as a board. And I'd like to get some language in there, and if you want to amend the language, just to get it started, so we have it, that we are absolutely, we are doing this, we're taking it seriously, and it sends a message.
I don't, will you read your language one more time?
I shall. Amend our personnel policy, require all employees of the town of Northfield to attend DEI training and continuing education regarding DEI, consistent with the Declaration of Inclusion of 13th December 2022. Is there a motion?
I don't know.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about that motion? So we're doing this under diversity, equity, and inclusion action item under the SLS board, is that correct? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor, as the motion is stated, please say aye.
Aye.
And is there any objections or abstentions? 5-0-0, thank you very much.
Can I get the exact wording for that term?
I'll give it to you, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Northfield, huh? Yeah, thanks. Northfield Common Rehabilitation Project. Y'all had that discussion the last meeting when I was away, I thought that was very clever. But, so the discussion, I brought this up for the purpose of John wanting to have his, he wants to address the kiosk and get the kiosk in place, is that correct?
Yes.
So do we have a location for the kiosk, Mr. Manager? So we looked at a couple of spots. One is by Norwich, the armory. Again, the engineer looked at that and felt it was too tight, it was too close to the Mayo building, or the Mayo Insurance Building, sorry. And then we've looked at a bump out off of the common, that's what the engineers, I'm sorry, the folks from DuBois and King kind of sketched up. And folks also looked at possibly on the other, closer to the sidewalk, is my understanding, maybe I got the strong five in front of the, the armory, and putting out a bump out. But again, kind of what I had heard last discussion, folks were thinking about a bump out more closer to the common, as was detailed in the DuBois and King report. So those are possible locations. Okay, let me, let me rephrase my question. Is there, is there a location for the kiosk to be placed that doesn't require any, any money outside of the budget, other than the cost of moving it over there?
Not at this point. Not, well, not in, in the vicinity of the common or in the sidewalks running parallel or adjacent to the common. Obviously, the police department area, which I think folks had talked about at one time, but again, going back to the internal area to the common, we do not find a site without using municipal.
So we've got a, so my takeaway, we are going to, to your point, John, we don't know what we're doing with it. We don't know how much it's gonna cost because we don't have a place where we can do it for no cost.
Now, I have to say something. The cost that would be incurred would be building a nine-by-nine cement foundation to support the kiosk, and that's what we had before, so we will need a foundation. Towns folks moved it where it is so they can perhaps move it back to the smooth foundation. And I thought that one of the points of discussion was possibly ask the sidewalks for being renovated, that that nine-by-nine foundation could be incorporated within part of the sidewalk project.
So what?
Wall Street sidewalk project? Just trying to confirm, the Wall Street sidewalk project?
Originally, I thought that it could, I had heard that it might be incorporated with the work that's going on in Wall Street, that that particular contractor might be able to do it. But if not, then that would be the option.
Yeah, well, some of the designs, like the bump out is more than a, than just a concrete pad. It's a bigger, it's a bigger cost than, than that, but.
Yeah, we are not budgeting for it, and I don't think we can absorb that in the budget, budget with the current situation. So, John, we brought, brought your discussion up. I know that you want to get the kiosk out there and in place.
Yes.
I don't think we have, in order to do it at Norwich University, we're going to have an easement this time. That is clear. We're gonna have some type of memorandum of understanding of something, so we don't end up, when the property transfers, we gotta move our kiosk, which is a really cool thing. So that's, so how do you want to approach this, John?
I want to put it at Norwich.
You want to put it at the, at the old armory?
Yes.
And.
Because the bump out next to Polino's would interfere with the Gillespie trucks. Their sightlines would interfere, would be interfered with from Gillespie's trucks.
So, to get it at Norwich University takes what?
So I guess I would have to speak with the folks that own the Mayo built, or the Mayo Insurance, and, and see what their comfort level is, having that thing several feet off their building. and see what their comfort level is having that thing several feet off their building. Also, trying to identify where the property lines are. Engineer was out there. So again, further identifying the property lines, also speaking with the property owner, see their comfort level to have it a couple of feet off their building. The engineer was concerned that from a fire safety perspective, might not be the best idea to have that a couple of feet off of that building.
Okay. Board members, Stevens asked me to put this on the agenda so we can come up with the plan for the kiosk. Come up with a plan for the kiosk. And don't spend any money that's not in the budget. We might be able to absorb the cement pad. Okay.
I just have a question on the logistics. I don't think that we recommended that it go between the buildings of the Armory and the Mayo Building. We thought it would be on, that the sidewalk is owned by the town, correct?
The sidewalk's not big enough for it to go on the sidewalk.
No, I know, the way it is, you're right, the way it is.
So the first one we looked at was putting it on Norwich's property in between the buildings. That was the first thing we tried to look at.
Yeah.
And in many ways, that would be the most cost efficient.
I remember we went there.
The other plan is this like larger bulb out that we only have a design concept for and not engineering or anything. And so that would be a larger budget item that we would have, if we wanted to do that.
So would it be reasonable to get that kiosk back on cement in a place we could essentially, a nine-by-nine, four-footage piece of concrete, I can move with the forks on my tractor. So we can, if we wanted to, if we got permission from the property owners, say, we'd like to put this there, we'd like to have some document that says we can leave it there until we come up with another plan. And then if we, when we come up with another plan, if we want to, we can move the kiosk. If it happens to be 10 or 15 years and the kiosk needs to be replaced, then we can do something different with it. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes.
I'm trying to ask a question. Yeah.
Would it be a loss of parking spots?
I'm sorry?
Would it be a loss of parking?
Warranted.
Not this current idea.
Warranted, yeah. We're talking about the bus stop, yes?
Yes.
And you put it on the Norwich Mayo Insurance side, are we going to lose parking spots?
With the concept where it's stuck between the buildings, no. With the bump out thing, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would you be thinking of doing the bump out when?
We haven't budgeted for it, so.
We haven't had.
It may happen within the next two years.
No, I don't know, we don't know.
We got a bridge being built and you're planning on changing the common routing.
Yeah.
We also have a mortgage on the common right now.
Yeah.
So there's a lot to discuss about funding and how we're going to fund anything in there. We've got so many things to discuss and we've got, and prioritizing, we've prioritized, right? So we've got a priority, prioritization, the kiosk is one of them.
It's number one.
It's number one. And from what I understand, there will be no loss of parking. So, which, Greenmount? I don't agree with that. Well, because there will be a loss of parking. So what are you going to have, a bus stop? Are the participants going to walk through the cars parked? I was, I was just going down that path. Saying that, if, if Greenmount, I was going to say, if Greenmount Transit accepts the idea that people can walk through the cars. Let me just say, my F-250 is a big truck and it's got big windows and it's got dumps and chains. I just don't see somebody, and that's, that's not handicap accessible. So there's everything wrong. Is it temporary? What bothers me about temporary is there's nothing more permanent than temporary.
Well, there's that handicap accessible cutout on the sidewalk, it's on the EV chargers.
So what we're going to do is ask the manager to follow up on this and come up with something that fits the needs so we can put the kiosk where it belongs, there's some time, type of warranty that we can leave it there until we do something else. And he's going to work with everybody on that.
I have to bring up one thing with regard to parking. I have made it my business to check on the common at various different times of the day and various different days to see what the parking situation actually is. And I have yet to come to the common where there is not, even at quarter to 12:00 in the afternoon, there is not several, as in two digits, parking spaces, including there, along there.
You're not coming at the right time, Mary, trust me. You're not coming at the.
What is the right time?
When Norwich is in session and the students are using the school. When, it's nothing against it, but when there's Farmer's Market, it's jammed with parks, park spaces. I had a client park literally in the middle of the road. No one could get by because there was no parking. He has issues walking and he had to come into our office.
Well, you're at the, you're at the Mayo?
Mayo Insurance, yeah.
Okay.
So luckily, no one came. He made a payment and out he went and people could go back through. But there was a serious issue.
Today at the market, we were full. There was two, two empty places in front, well, not in front of hers, but to the east of her place. It was a foremarket.
For an permanent location, I really wish we could find one that doesn't take parking from the common.
Right.
I know the, that the future, if we've been looking at the transit oriented development and how they're envisioning Central Street, there's a lot, I mean, Wall Street, sorry. There's a lot of space on Wall, but I know the bus doesn't want to go across the railroad tracks. Is that correct? Because it's still like, once that feels more like a downtown, there's lots of space there now. I just wish there was somewhere, if anybody can think of a spot where the, you know, more space that the, because you have to have double or more than double the sidewalk width of concrete.
They'd go across the road. They'd go across tracks at some point in the neighborhood.
Well, yeah, we're putting in a brand new, beautiful sidewalk on Wall Street. And so just across the tracks by the police station, to me, is not very far to have to walk to get on the bus. But the, the railroad tracks are a obstacle. But there's plenty of space.
Do we have it in writing from GMT that they do not want to cross the railroad tracks?
I'll have to double check.
I know we had, I would like to see that later.
So we did meet with GMT, Tom and I, last summer, looked at all kinds of scenarios for the kiosk. And we said, hey, we're looking, looking at it in this location next to the Armory. And they said, it's a little awkward, but fortunate the bus opens on the right, on the proper side. But we would expect a handicap space, plus you would lose, like you said, you'd lose the space to accommodate that. But yeah, again, they were not, my impression, I'll check with them, that they were not comfortable with crossing the tracks and having to turn around and then come back through. They felt that that was not.
They wouldn't turn around, they could just go right around the police station.
Well, same thing, but you know, and then.
I can't believe that GMT, who has a populace at the senior center in Vermont State Housing Authority, isn't visiting the Vermont State Housing Authority.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking to the future, like, we're really hoping to develop that whole street. So it would feel, and in the imminent future, we are going to be making a very nice new sidewalk going along there.
I think it's crime just sitting in the middle of a field right now, rusting. And at the very least, it should have been brought out onto Wall Street so they could use it.
Doesn't, doesn't the bus go to the senior center every Wednesday anyway?
It does.
Go to Wal-Mart and?
Not the, not the transit, a bus does.
But that's, yeah, individualized, they will go into neighborhoods, but not the commuter.
Is it a different vehicle?
Same bus.
It's the same bus, so it's not that the bus physically.
Well, they have, they have downsized, they're not using the bigger ones, they're using the smaller.
Yeah, but it's the same one, it's the same vehicle, I've seen it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Meaning the same vehicle that they use daily, they use at the senior center.
Now that they've downsized, yeah.
They don't trade vehicles and use the same one. So, well, that was an interesting discussion, John, but thank you for bringing that up. We've just had 15 minutes and I'm not sure if we're going to have a solution or not. But we're back on it to see if we can come up with something that is creative, talk to the business owners, and don't use my phrase, there's nothing more permanent than temporary when you start talking to property owners. But we got to get that thing, there's been too much work. Gail has put an enormous amount of effort in there and now she's, she's, her pride, she's sitting under a tree. God.
I've had some meetings with the folks at Norwich that helped us to build it. And I found ways that we can renovate the metal posts. I found out what we can do with the roll. So I found out ways that we can renovate it and fix it up if we just have a place.
Thank you, Gail. We're going to get your kiosk, I'm hoping that that will become some type of, before snow flies, goal. However, I have, I've ever told you that. I got some tickets to Brooklyn Bridge, too. So, no action item on item F timestamp now is 2054, that makes it almost 9:00. And Northfield Covered Bridges issues, folks, on your packages. You have a flat, I'm sorry, you have a covered bridge project. The governor has stated that they're going to do this, I think it's in the first week of August, first full week of August. This is the covered bridge banner, it's 10 feet by 2 feet. There is a logo for the Vermont Covered Bridge Society on the side of this. It's $80. If you want to have sponsored by on it, sponsored on it, it costs more. The question is, should the town of Northfield have one of these? By the way, this came to the chairman. So I immediately went to the chairman of my house and she said Farmer's Market's going to buy one. I'm sorry, yeah, Farmer's Market is going to sponsor one. We then reached out to the Fall, they're going to sponsor one, but it's not going to be personalized. So the question is, the town of Northfield, for a cost of $80, want to invest in a banner like this? So who?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Are we getting one for one bridge or?
I'm asking, just wondering if you want to have one. Because we are going to do our best to market this to everybody. Norwich needs to take ownership of one and, you know. There may be another organization that does it, so we'll work it. But I just wanted to give the town the opportunity. That one's been pledged, whether it's on both sides of the fall or not. Any further discussion on the covered bridge banner for $80? Having hearing done, all in favor of approving the covered bridge banner for, one covered bridge banner for the cost of $80, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
You have it, Mr. Manager, the town has authorization to buy one banner and you have all the information. Second thing on covered bridges is the headache bar. Now, when John mentioned he'd like to have this on the agenda, I had to say, John, I really wish we could come up with a different branding than headache bar. But when Cassie heard me say that to John, she said, I like the branding of headache bar. The idea is we put some type of superstructure in front of the bridge that prevents damage directly to the bridge. So, taken away, John.
Well, I reached out to Lindenville and talked to the town manager there. And I sent you a copy of his response, and I can read it here.
Please do.
"We have reached the conclusion that as long as we ensure it is properly posted and is not set at a height less than the posted height, there is no liability. Further, we engineered it to withstand the hits, so in our opinion, we are covered. We just didn't throw something together. Lastly, parking garages have headache bars. If there is a major liability, one would assume it would be pretty well established that you can't have them. We are protecting a structure just as they are. When or if someone hits it, anybody can sue anybody. We decide you can't live on what ifs. Most people say the GPS told me go this way. Sounds like their issue is with GPS, not us, will be my answer. I say this will be the understanding that we still have blinking signage for the posted heights from the north, four posted signs, one blinking coming from the south. Not sure if any of this will ease the minds of your fellow board members, but this was our conclusion. Ultimately, if Google and Apple had respected our request for change, none of this would be necessary. But they refused to add, change their routing."
Thank you, John. Did he, was there any comment about cost?
No.
Sorry, John, where was this, St. Johnsbury?
Yeah, I can give it to you.
St. Johnsbury, okay.
Or Lindenville.
Lindenville.
So there's no cost associated with that, but it sounds like something that might be a budget item in the future.
I would suggest that we have this, when we get a cost benefit analysis of the cost of having cameras on the bridge, that we might find that we don't need cameras on the bridge if we have headache bars. So maybe we can swap one thing for the other. Who would make these headache bars?
Well, a group of high school students made them in Lindenville.
Do you think they have the plot plans, you could use theirs?
Randolph Tech Center.
They just had to change. Exactly what I was thinking.
What does he say?
Randolph Tech Center.
Randolph Tech Center?
I believe they took this on as a project.
Yes.
Sounds splendid.
Yep.
Very good. So the next thing, so we've covered banners, we've covered headache bars, the next thing is signage. On Stony Brook, I was coming home during the daylight and in front of me was a deck over tow truck like what Martins has, and on it they had a panel truck. And it was a dually, so it was probably 11 feet, so altogether it was about an 18, 19 foot clearance. They are ahead of me by 200 yards, they did not turn off into the three properties that are on that road that they might have turned on, but they did stop with my flashing lights and my, my horn. Are you impersonating an officer, is that what you're? No, I'm impersonating somebody that loves that bridge. He saw the bridge, by the way, he's a professional driver. And it was FedEx stopped and gave him a way around and I, it was a community affair. Then we got him turned around and he went up over Smith Hill. And the next time I came down to Stony Brook, I was thinking about this, obviously. And I realized if anybody is going up Stony Brook, you have a Y that takes you on pavement to Smith Hill and Stony Brook goes like this and there is no warning sign that there is a low bridge ad.
We'll get one out of you.
And I just want, when?
I think we can do it in three weeks.
Okay, you don't need to have board action on that then.
Charlie, do you think that one on the, do you need two for each side? Or do you think it's only the up?
I, I would, well, now Lydia, that's a good one.
I would do it on both.
Yeah.
Near both, both and the Smith.
Yeah. So at the intersection, both intersections of Smith Hill.
Yeah, okay.
I hadn't thought about coming south.
Well, I wasn't sure how much traffic would potentially come that way, not know there's a bridge.
Well, there could be.
Definitely possible. We have plenty of issues on Cox Road with both directions.
A hay wagon will go through that bridge, but if you've got hay over the top of the wagon, it won't go through that bridge. How about that?
Town manager's report. Thank you. Real quick, as I noted in my report, the condemnation hearing that was originally scheduled for June 3rd had to be changed, we have switched it to June 24th. Again, the state is, was saying that there need to be a 30-day notice. Our attorney was saying 15. We feel 15 is fine, but our attorney felt that just to be safe, we would push that to June 24th, it'll require a site visit and then a comeback to the hearing. Paint Tree Waterline Project, as you can see, the contractor is, has been excavating pavement, putting in new pipe in the packet. There should be an updated schedule, I've been asking for some time, I finally got that. Line Street sidewalk project.
Hold on, can I ask a question regarding that?
Sure.
So what is the large blue pipe that is on the west side of South Main Street?
That's running all the way up?
Yeah.
So that's temporary water. At times, they're going to have to shut water off, and so it'll...
And what are the blue pipes that are sticking up out of the sidewalks or out of the street?
So that's where service lines are going to be, and it's also for that temporary water.
Thank you. I've had three people ask me that question, and I couldn't answer them. Now, I'm just thinking, you know, we've done a good job publicizing the construction project, and because they were blue, I knew what they were. I didn't even think that... Obviously, nobody thought to explain those blue lines are temporary water line. They're not going to be fire suppressant, are they?
Right.
So why is... Where is fire suppressing going to come if there's a fire on Main Street?
So the main is still there. The main will be intact, so at all times, we'll be able to use the hydrers.
Okay.
Like currently, like they currently do. So we will not lose the ability to tap into those hydrers.
So this is the transition from the new main to the connections...
And when they do service lines, they need...
Okay. Good point. I think Dave's point's well taken. We should consider explaining to folks that, you know, leave the Y on the way here. I picked one up just to see what material it was. It'd be a good idea to let people know.
Yeah, it's a good idea. So, Line Street Sidewalk Project. Please to announce that they've started that project. All's going well, and hopefully they'll finish that early August. Ambulance Union. As you know, the part-time ambulance employees have decided to try to unionize. The next step in the process is for the Vermont Labor Board to conduct a vote of the membership on unionizing. If 50% of the members vote to unionize and it's certified, then there'll be a union. And the next step will be for the municipalities to negotiate a contract with those employees. We're pleased to announce a planning grant. The town did receive a planning grant for $16,389 from the state of Vermont to update the zoning regs. That's a nice positive. Last one is, in your packet, is an insurance loss run report from Vermont League to cities and towns. Some very good news in that report. I know the dollar amount over five years seems a bit high, but there is some good news in there that both the ambulance... I'm sorry. Both the highway and the utility folks did not have any claims during that... Injury claims during that time. And the utilities did not have any injury claims or any equipment claims. So very pleased. And as an aside, the league noted that that's very good news because statewide, we're seeing highway departments and public works, utilities, seeing a lot of claims. But again, very proud of the folks that there were no claims and trainings that have been done are paying off. There was, if not, in terms of the workers' comp, if not for one of the sizable claim in the ambulance, municipality would have really had very little claims. But overall, again, the representatives from the league that I met would have said, you guys are doing a great job, and you should be, you know, proud of how it's worked out. I think that covers it. Thanks.
Well done. That's a very good report. Were members comments, concerns, or questions? Just a reminder, Jeff, I'd like a copy of all utility budgets.
Yep, Dave, yep, utility.
Let's just not done yet there. Also, Lydia.
I'm also the big one.
John.
I'm also the most.
Lady, sure not.
Yeah, I have three things. First of all, one good thing, I have the Common Design Project. Won an award, a state... So we can now say we have an award-winning design. From... This is from the 2025 Vermont Public Places Awards. And we got a merit award in honoring Vermont's exemplary public spaces. And they say this was won by the thing we paid for. So this is for us to have. And so I'm giving it to you to put it up somewhere.
I'm in the...
Because it's been on my counter for a while. I was down in Randolph and I knocked into Emily Lewis with my daughter, and she said, come here. And I went to her office at Du Bois and came, and she gave it to me. So there you are. The second thing I wanted to draw the public's attention to, you who public everyone, is that the DLS Day is 6/23. That's the 23rd of June. And DLS Day, okay, this is my old probation officer kicking in here. DLS is the beginning of the sickest, saddest downward spiral you can possibly imagine for otherwise law-abiding people. And so this is a whole thing that our legislature and our judicial people have come up with. It's a way to get your license back while you pay the fines. So you don't have to wait till you pay the whole thing off. You pay along, along, along. And this can be set up at Washington County Diversion all day on the 23rd. It's a special day just for that. And Washington County Diversion is right by Domino's Pizza in Berry. It's not hard to find. Tell people, I know y'all, know somebody who needs to know this.
Are you going to put that on the front board for me?
Well, I could. It's out in front here on the public...
Okay.
Post or what do you call it, a bulletin board. And then the last thing I want to bring up is today, as I was driving into town, I'm very excited to buy this banner because I think it's time we take down the banner about Christmas wreaths and Christmas trees. I mean, and we just had Memorial Day. Let's not be premature, but...
I saw that, and I...
Yeah. It's got to happen. And so otherwise, we're just going to resolve to keep it up all the time. So, yeah, that was my last thing. So that's all.
John, I thought you were going to be on the western side.
Yes.
Can we talk about...
We've got it in our package, yes.
$26,000. My question is, is that one year worth of expenditures?
How much was it in a year?
July 24th.
So how much total have we spent on that truck?
Over a half a year.
So that represents, what, 10% of the total purchase price of a new one?
Yeah, I know.
So at what point does management recommend that we replace the truck instead of pouring money into it?
It is being replaced.
No, but you didn't answer my question. At what point does management recommend early retirement and replacement instead of spending $50,000 on a truck that's...
That's a good question. So the... What part of the truck? Off the chassis? Oh, I guess the dump was replaced, as you'll see in the CIP. And there was lengthy discussion by the former, previous foreman, said he felt he could keep that truck going. I think that was a bit ambitious and a little bit too optimistic.
Well, obviously, the cost doesn't count.
So it is being replaced.
So we're spending 20... At least 10%, probably 20% of a purchase price to repair a vehicle that's 10 years old. To be fair, 11, 11 years.
Well, the dump is less, but, yeah.
That's because we replaced the dump.
Well, I think we should sell it for quite a bit of money because it's a lot of parking there.
You want to be in charge of it?
Yes, I don't think it's worth fixing.
No, no. Funny that.
Towing it down Turkey Hill to the town garage. I think it's time to...
Retire it once. Yeah, but we are replacing it.
When?
So there... You've seen the info. So there are in the two trucks that were on the budget coming in in December. Or no, I'm sorry, November.
They could not be digging, looking at town... That's good. No, that's good. I got lots to say, but we're going to do that in executive session. Is there anybody else in public participation that has sat through this meeting patiently and would like to have something to say? Sally Davidson, please.
I just have a question. I was working in the gardens at the police department today, and I noticed there are two huge gas tanks. Kind of, it's between the two buildings, but it's kind of on the front lawn. I'm just kind of wondering why that was pushed down on the side of the building or behind the building? Why is it sitting right? It's an eyesore.
Propane tanks?
Yes.
Well, they usually will put those in the most convenient spot, less run... Less pipe to run.
Well, it's an eyesore. Just saying.
So the gas company put it underneath the snowshed part of the roof along with the generators?
It's beside the generator. It's the Wall Street side of the generator. Yeah, and if it comes, don't build the roof, it's going to have to have a roof over it, right?
We're not sure about that. Either we paid for a generator, or I did not look at its installation. But I go by their free fighting, which is what I'll be looking at this Friday.
Thank you. It's an eyesore.
I just have a question.
Or not.
Two questions, actually. Perhaps it could be looked into, the cameras on the bridge that keeps getting hit. It can't be definitive what the damage was. Maybe the cameras could be moved for better angles.
Yes.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
And then when they did the... When I was here, when they were talking about the revitalization project downstreet, and I just wanted to check something. Where Domino's is, does the town own any of that property?
We do not.
We do not. All right, so he was projecting if it was purchased. Okay, because I was just thinking maybe the bus kiosk could go there, but I wasn't sure if I understood correctly or not.
However, that's a good point.
That is a good answer.
We might be able to strike a deal on that, temporary.
We talked about that way in the beginning of the revitalization.
Did they?
It just seems like...
What do you think, Gail? Do we have... Is there something worth looking into, Gail?
On the property near Domino's?
Right.
Rather do it on the property near Philino's. No.
I think your nanny's off the...
I'm almost certain that that mission was scrapped.
I know. We'll check into it. I mean, I can't check with the owners, but I can check into the feasibility from our end of it.
We might have an opportunity there. You never know. But we're going to hopefully find a home for that kiosk.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You didn't bring any cookies?
Yes, he did.
Oh, he did? I didn't get one.
They haven't been opened by the law.
But we have a new vendor at the Farmer's Market, and they make cupcakes, lollipops. So there you go.
I have a question.
You're not the one that makes them, it's your wife.
Is there any chocolate in them?
I don't know.
Doesn't look like it.
If it is, throw it out.
Unless it's white.
Can't eat it, throw it out.
No, you cannot eat chocolate.
Well, you could, but you wouldn't be around to talk about it.
No. You're wicked migraine headache.
All right. Well, I don't know what the contents of that is, but we have a new vendor selling cake donuts, and I don't want to talk anymore about it because it's out of corporate means. We'll promote the Farmer's Market, but I did want to give you a treat.
Appreciate that.
All right. Is there anybody in the online world that would like to have a comment? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to enjoy a comment?
I would like to state again that I certainly support our police chief, 100%.
That's good to hear.
I want to thank you all for your service.
For our service? Thank you. We don't get that much, but thank you. I think you would be looking good up here at one of these seats, by the way.
Yeah, give it 20 years.
We'll make you sign a contract to that effect. We're going to... I take a motion in order to executive session. So move.
Second.
Oh, they were saying aye. Aye. Have a short recess, and we are allowed to sign a number of documents. We're going to invite the manager. So all right. I'm buying 10 flags. He's going to do 10, too.
Oh, he is.
And ready to do a set. And we're going to lead all... About a cross, because it's exercise. No.